Recording in progress.
Call to order, the St. Joseph City Council Meeting of June 5th, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We talked about that.
I have not thought like.
Item two, public comments. Keith, you want to say anything? Anybody online? Okay, very good. Item three, approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Motion, second, to approve the agenda. Any issues or concerns? All those in favor signify by aye. Aye opposed, motion does indeed carry. Item four, consent agenda.
So moved, second.
Motion, second, to approve consent agenda. This might be a repeating theme here tonight, I don't know. Motion, second, to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor signify by aye. Aye opposed, motion does carry. Yeah, kind of. Item five, who's going to give us up on item five? Keith coming up, or who's there? Okay, come on Keith. Introduce yourself, please.
Alright, yeah, my name is Keith Loagie and I am the president of the Relief Association for the Fire Department. And I guess the reason I'm here tonight, I think in your packet you have a summary of where our status, or our current special fund is, the summary, where our special fund is right now. And every year, we used to do this with the Fire Board, so I used to present this to the Fire Board, go through every year with them, give a status update where we're at on that. And then now with the Fire Board, the changes that we had there, now we're doing this city council with this, so. Do you guys, we'd like to ask for an increase of $200, I think you see that in your information that you have there. So I guess I'm here to answer any questions you guys have as far as getting on the special fund, or.
Why 200?
Why 200?
Yeah.
Because the fund can support it.
Well, you're solvent right now, aren't you?
What's that?
You're solvent right now, aren't you?
Yep. But we can also, you know, for next year, well, this is for next year, right? This is being in 2024. So right now, we're at 3,200 per year service per member. We're asking for a $200 increase up to 3,400 for 2024.
And I asked Lori, what do we, what does the city donate into the fund?
3,000.
Yes, we're not required to do any contribution, but the city and the townships have agreed the minimum of 3,000 annually for municipal contribution, and we have been supporting that.
Okay. I guess I don't. You guys have any questions?
I, I do. What does the fund, what does the Relief Association do with this money, Keith?
This is used strictly for pensions for retired firefighters, so after you're.
So we're contributing to a pension fund?
Yes.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, yep.
And this is per firefighter?
It's, it has, so the way the, the special fund works, every year it has to be made whole, so that if the fire department disbanded tomorrow, you could pay out all the years of service for all your active and deferred firefighters. So that fund has got to cover all those years of service. Now, they can't collect on that until 10 years is when they become vested.
Understood. And so like the event that the Fire Department had recently at the Moose Lodge, that annual dinner that's going to move someplace else next year, supposedly. Does, where does money from that go?
That's our general fund, so that's a completely separate fund from what this is right here. This is our special fund, which is only retirement money. We don't, we don't add to that, we don't take away from that. The only, the only thing we're allowed to take from this on a yearly basis is fees, for accounting fees or salaries for officers, stuff like that. That's the only thing we're allowed to take out of this fund, otherwise we can't do a lot with it.
The relief fund then is for pensions?
Yes, the, the special fund is for pensions, yes. The general fund is our separate money, which we have fundraised for.
For equipment and things that you don't get through the budgeting process or whatnot?
Yep, equipment, we bought the Lucas machine with it, I know, not too long ago here. I know we're going to buy a lot of equipment for the new fire truck. I guess that was a grant that we got for the new extra education equipment, but. But yeah, we'll be spending quite a bit on the, the new truck when it comes in.
Sure.
Yep.
So the fund is solvent now?
Yes.
To what degree?
Well, showing, so it's on the summary of, and it should be in your packet there, but basically, right now, if we, if we get a 7% return, so that's the, right now we're at 3,200 per year service, we get 7% return on our fund this year, with all of our liabilities, asset, or the other liabilities taken with the assets, we're looking at a surplus of about 118,590 dollars.
And where'd you get 7% from?
So we talked to our financial advisors, we use UBS as our financial advisors, and I talked to them. Right now, year-to-date, we're at about 3%, is where we're at up right now, so I thought, I said, what do you think? You know, I mean, it's a guess, right? It's all based on markets and things like that, so. And he, you know, averages that 7% range, so he said, let's, you know, use the average on that, so.
So UBS manages this money?
Correct, yes.
And do we see the statements?
Yeah.
From UBS of how this money is managed, Lori?
They're actually, the fire relief is actually a separate federal, federal ID, so they can have their own investment statement. Now, the annually, they do get audited, they have to report to the state auditor, and this pension fund does show up in the city's financial statements as a footnote, knowing that there's a liability out here, so if it is short, the city has to cover the difference.
Who reviews the statement that comes from?
We do see the statement at the end of the year because it affects the audit, but otherwise, we don't review their statements throughout the year, that's their own entity.
So the state.
At the, we were, at the fire relief meeting, we see the statements every month.
Yep.
Yeah. Or every three months, every three months, yeah.
Quarterly, yep.
We go over it and they bring it in.
Alright.
Yep.
We don't contribute 3,000 every year, we just, that's just a, a number that we have to if they run short on their.
No, we do 3,000, that's the minimum that the Fire Board had agreed to contribute to this, regardless of what the Schedule 1 and 2 says that they, is required.
Okay.
If, if it shows higher, then we have to do the higher amount, obviously, and I've only, in my time here, I've only seen that happen twice, and it was right after the recession in 2008.
And this contribution comes out of our budget?
Yes.
We're asking our taxpayers to put this money in there?
Yes, and the townships contribute, you know, their share of it, too.
Okay.
Well, I'll turn to you two guys, I don't know how often they come and ask for increases.
Once, once a year.
Every year, on a year. Well, it didn't for a long time, then we've been steadily getting it better. I was going to say, at one point, the fire relief was looking at different investment?
Yeah.
Correct.
Did we ever?
We did, well, we started the process last year and.
Was that PERA?
What's that?
Was that PERA?
Yeah, yeah, yep, yep. So we, we started looking at it last year, and the information, for some reason, they got bad information. Now, where that information came from, Lori, I know we talked about it briefly, it's, we had a lot of inconsistencies in the information that, they pulled the information from the records they had. Those records were not very accurate, because we had a lot of members that were retired, deferred, not with the department anymore, that were all shown on that statement. So our plan is this year to get a more accurate list of currently where we stand, liabilities, assets, and stuff like that, and then reply again, or what you ask for is you request a analysis from them. So we send that information to them, request analysis, they come back with the summary where we would be at, and.
Okay.
So that's what we did last year, just not great information that we got back, so.
No, I think it's good.
We're trying it this year.
No, I think it's good that you did reach out and had, had some comparison, so that's good.
I move to approve, Tucker.
Motion, second. Increase the added contribution from 32 to 3,400 per year for each firefighter. Any other questions or concerns? All in favor signify by aye. Aye opposed, motion carries, thank you Keith.
Thank you guys.
Item six, this is yours David?
It is Mayor, thank you. So, on this particular item, I guess I'm not sure how, how much background you want, or I can give you on this. I know it was in process here when I got here, but what we're, what we found with the, we have David Drown Associates doing our pay equity study. And what, from what I could tell, it was based on, we're going to use what we had done previously and kind of expand upon that. What we're finding is, it's not overly compatible, and what was happening is we're having to make some assumptions and some estimated guesses. So we had quoted, quoted the conversation with David Drown Associates, and I think what was best to do is to amend the contract and add for 6,600 dollars and have them do the actual pay grid, and kind of, and do that, review that and redo that here again. And the reason I'm saying that is, I think by doing this, we will get a much more accurate, and more importantly, more defendable result, as far as what our pay equity study is going to be, and what our, what our recommendation is going to be. And it also appears that it might be more cost-effective in the long run as far as what the recommendation will, will likely be with our, with our steps and our grid. I think will have a more positive impact, impact on the budget than what we were looking at, so. I know it's a little bit confusing, but I, I think by doing this, we're going to get a much, a much more accurate and I believe more defendable result, so. I will take any questions that you may have, I will say right now, I might have to defer some of them to Lori and Kayla, who were involved in the process here before I was as well, but I'll answer anything that I can.
So David, it's the same company that we've been working with? You know, I want to like extend the contract and add another 6,600 for more hours for them to finish it up?
Yes, it, well, yeah, it's the same company we're working, we were working with. However, part of what they were basing it on was done by a different company, and that's where some of the issue was coming from.
Was this your idea, or did staff suggest that you do this and present it to us tonight?
It's hard to say. It was, it's a result of, of quite a bit of conversation in looking at, at the situation that we're in, and it, the discussion was, really started where we were having to fill in some gaps and make some assumptions, or make, based on, 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 kind of educated guesses. So, based on that, so because of that, we started talking about, well, you know, what's the end result going to be, how comfortable are we going to be with the result, how firm is that result going to be? And from that discussion, this came out, so it's, it's hard to say who pinpointed it. I will say, I probably asked some of the questions that led us there, but I, I don't know that, I can say who actually really came up with the idea.
So you said that this could have a positive impact on next year's budget?
Well, I mean, I think it might not be as much of an increase in our, in our personnel costs as it potentially could be. I think, I think we're going to have a better recommendation of our, what our personnel costs are going to be, and it, it may be not quite as much of a change, meaning some of the positions might not change as drastically as it maybe was looking that was going to.
Bob.
This all started with the contracts? Okay, we had another study done by, I forget their name now, but Flaherty and Hood, that first study that, where we went into our contracts with. So we, you know, went forward with the contracts based on recommendations, so forth and so on. And then after that fact, oh, see, who was it, was, you know, Jeff, Jeff wanted to do pay equity, follow up with a pay equity report, which out of the pay equity report comes the, what you should be paying these positions versus what you're paying. So with that secondary report coming out, it'll put the categories into more perspective of what they should get, where that raise should be. So whatever raise they got this year, whatever the compare, or the pay equity came out, they might be below that number, or they might be above that number. Then the points change and everything, and everybody goes into different slots, whatever, or stays in the same slot. So we had one case in point, I'm not going to mention the name, but probably eight, nine years ago, where that pay equity report came out, and one employee was way above the, the, the pay, pay scale. So that person was froze with, for any other raises until that number caught up to where they would be. Do you follow? So.
That person would have been pissed off.
That's one reason for the pay equity, so when Dave says it's might affect next, it will affect next year's budget. And I don't see the numbers where everybody fell, and what the discrepancies are, you know, plus or positive, or plus or minus, so.
Have you seen?
Am I, are we communicating right?
Yes, I'm sorry, what was that?
Have you seen any of the data from the first, you know, the first contract? Or have they completed the?
Oh, yes, yes.
And so you've seen that already?
Yes, it's not its, its final form, and I think, and that's where some of the discussion, how we. To get it to its final form, where we would be able to put it before the council and adopt it, I think, in, in my opinion, and I think Lori would probably agree with me, I don't want to put words in your mouth, is we were, we were having to make too many assumptions, or, or, or things that weren't entirely based on, on data. There were some, too, in my opinion, too many unknowns that we were in there, so we, and, and to get the, to get the background information that we need, to get the pay grade that we would need, was really outside of the scope of the contract that we currently had, and that's where the discussion came in. Well, how do we get to the point where, because for me, the, the important part of it is, is if particularly we're going into contract negotiations, I need something that's defendable and based on fact. And to get there was outside of the scope of what we had previously, because it was relying on some previous information. And that's where the discussion veered then to, well, how do we get there? And this was the way that was, that was determined would be our best bet to, to answer those questions and get us to where we needed to be.
So, they haven't done any, to this point, they haven't done pay grid calculations or anything in that first?
Lori, can I turn that one over to you?
They haven't done those four bullets yet?
So we, so, first of all, they did get to see the Flaherty and Hood results. And we had the pay scale, so, one of the problems that, when you have the pay equity, which is assigning the points to each position, that was flawed when we went into the market analysis, which got us into going into the, to doing, to correcting that with this pay equity study. But what we found is, like, on the Flaherty and Hood schedule, we went to seven steps, right? Seven steps, and there were 17 pay grades in there. When you go into the pay equity, you have to logically have breaks in between each of those pay grades and what you're doing with those steps. And so you might have positions now that we're going to say, grade five is going to be 300 to 325, and that, that range gets this pay grade. And when we assigned that, we realized that the grid maybe needed to expand, we didn't know how much. And then trying to figure out, how do we incorporate, say it went to 19 grades? How do we incorporate that market analysis now into 19 grades? How do you compare that, that information and not overpay or underpay an employee? It didn't have the rationale to get us to that point, and so we were trying to, we seen some initial grids with David Drown and Associates, but just to try to, try to incorporate that, but again, we had to make assumptions, well, it doesn't really work, we're going to have to overpay this pay grade in order to make it work to that grid. And then we're going to have to underpay here, we need to adjust this schedule, this step increase only 3%, this one, 4%, to try to make the numbers all work. And what it came down to is we were trying to make the numbers work and not based on actual data. We were just trying to make those work. So this gets us to that level where we're now matching what the grades and the differentiations of the grades, having that logic, and also doing that market analysis and placing them correctly with those points.
That's all done?
That's what we're going to.
That's the piece that we need to get to, the two, just, it's like comparing apples to oranges is what really happened.
Yeah, I understand, I understand what's going on here, but there is no final document yet?
No, no.
No, we have to, we have to get there, yeah.
Okay, so how long is that going to take, you think?
Not long.
Not long?
No, I think within the month, we think we probably have.
Huh? $6,600, like, it's almost double, doubles the contract.
It's additional cost.
Yeah, and I guess.
Oh, okay.
So they're going to go back to, and they'll, and they'll review the communities that we reviewed before, so they know, they're, they'll be able to still have like a logical comparison.
Okay. So, if I could, so, DDA took Flaherty and Hood's report, they did their own report, and they tried, they went like this, kind of, they, they both missed each other. So now, DDA is going to do another pseudo Flaherty and Hood with their own data. I mean, we're kind of throwing out Flaherty and Hood and starting again, that's how I interpret it.
Yeah, we still have that as a basis, we don't want to throw it out, but it doesn't, it just doesn't correlate nicely to go into the new pension scale.
Flaherty and Hood did a lot of work, we paid for it, it doesn't work with us, we have to use DDA, and DDA has to do more work in order to make it work for us.
And I just want to make sure that, that, I want to make it clear here that, I guess, I'm not saying Flaherty and Hood did anything incorrectly or wrong, it's, it's a different.
Different way.
Different process, and it doesn't really coordinate the best.
Yep.
Okay, I understand now, so what, what they ask is 6,600 dollars?
Yes, correct.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, second, move forward with the amended document and contract. My only question is, did you get a timeline on when it's going to come out, or? I didn't see that in the.
It's not within the month, did he say like roughly a month?
It didn't say that, it didn't say that in here, though, it didn't say, we're going to provide you with this by this date.
No.
So I just want to make sure we square that date, so we have it yet this year.
Well, it definitely will be this year, but okay, I'll, I'll confirm the date, but yeah, it definitely wouldn't go through this year. I, I wouldn't, it would, I can't imagine it'd go past the end of the summer.
Yeah, because he, he said that he could turn it around to make sure that we had it even for preliminary budget numbers, so.
Yeah, because we made it clear we wanted it for the, for the budget and for contract.
Okay, very good. Motion, second, approve the amendment, and?
I got one question.
Okay, go ahead, Bob.
Contractually, how does that affect the, the union contracts if we, I mean, the end result is going to be an over and under situation?
We know like the, the pay scale had, the approval was 3% in '24 and 3% in '25 for the general increase, so the pay scale still has to match what that contract says.
Okay, so it's there, we have to match what the contract says.
To do that 3% general increase.
Some people, or.
Possibly.
Upgrade them, too.
Possibly.
Okay.
Individually, it will be a different case by case, but overall, the, their union contract says 3% general increase.
And this document will spell all that out?
Yes.
Okay.
Motion, and second, approval of the amendment to the 2023 pay equity study. Any other questions or concerns? All those in favor signify by aye. Aye opposed, motion does indeed carry. Thank you guys, thanks David. Uh, let's see, Northern Natural Gas?
Yep, that's me.
Yep.
Okay, thank you Mayor, councilmembers, this one, we received a request, it's actually been going on for a little while. I know Mr. O'Neal was involved in, in getting it started, and we're to the point now where we can bring it before the council. Northern Natural Gas, they're, they want to expand their tower, their border station located at the intersection of College and Field Street. In order to do that, they're going to need a pipeline facility easement, because part of that is going to cross over to where our, yeah, cross over into city property there, which is show is the, the blue and the green there. And also, as you can see on the southern edge of, I'll call it the southern edge of that property, or where their facility is, you can see kind of, almost looks like a field road. That is on city property as well, and from what we could tell, or at least from what they could tell, they never really had a formal road access agreement for that. So what they're asking is really two things. One is to, for an access road agreement on the southern portion there to access that, and the second is a pipeline facility easement, I'm going to call it on the north end, which then allows them to put some of that piping onto that city property. So this has been worked on for a while, the agreements have been reviewed and modified by our city attorney. She does now approve them to form and to content, they were given to Northern Natural Gas, they have reviewed them as well. They, they agree with the changes Ms. DeGee has put forward and have not suggested any other changes. So the recommendation would be to approve it, and I'm not sure if Ryan or Randy wanted to be, that, that red portion there, as you can see, was a, was a concern that was brought up, I believe, from engineering for sightlines, and it does look like that would be taken into account, but if you want to expand on it.
Uh, excuse me, you summarized it well, the, the red triangle that you see was, was a sight triangle for traffic that would be exiting Field Street, so if you're westbound coming to College Avenue, that red triangle represents the sightline at a minimum that we'd want to maintain. And as David mentioned, they're not proposing any additional above-grade infrastructure, so the, you can kind of see in the aerial photograph where the blue line crosses that, that white rectangle in the image now. Those are pedestals that are in place today, so we, we were agreeable as well, since it did not, their request did not propose any additional infrastructure that would affect sightlines.
So in that case, then I would recommend that the council then make a motion to approve both agreements. I think we could do that in one motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, and second, approval of both access road agreement and pipeline facility easement. Questions or concerns? Councilor Klusner.
So what's the nominal payment we're going to get from NNG?
$10.
That's very nominal.
Yeah.
Couldn't have been less.
I mean, I guess I can't, I can't speak to, to it 100%. I'm not trying to push, push the blame or dodge a bullet here, because this, that agreement was drafted before I got here. I will say, in my experience, typically, for these types of utilities, particularly natural gas, electricity, those kind of things, any kind of expansion on that is fairly nominal, because it's looked at as it's a service that is needed by the, the community as a whole. The one, the one utility where it tends to differ is with cell phone companies, cell phone towers. Then you tend to, cities tend to charge more and use it more as, like I say, a moneymaker. For several reasons, number one, there's limited capacity on things that they're putting on, like cell towers, light, light poles, those kind of things, there's limited capacity for it, so they want to make sure that they get the best bang for their buck, but in my experience, typically, it's been just, you know, and it's an anomaly, just because you have to have some amount to, some amount to transfer, but they have not been looked at as, as a moneymaker because of, like I said, it's a, it's a service that is essential to the, to the community.
But they need this to happen to expand, expand their pipeline west?
Correct.
Through St. Ben's?
That, I guess, I, I don't know if that's the case or not.
No? Why St. Ben's cutting down all those trees if the pipeline's not going through there?
Well, that's, that's their property, they own the easement.
They're replacing the pipeline.
They already own that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Motion, and second, approval of both access road agreement and pipeline facility easement. All those in favor signify by aye. Aye opposed, motion does carry. What are we up to now? Engineering reports.
Good evening. Before the council, our two draft resolutions related to the 2023 street improvements. So we're at that stage in the Chapter 429 process where the council would schedule the special assessment hearing and declare the cost that, that would be assessed, and so you have two drafts before you. First one declaring the cost to be assessed, the second one being the schedule of the hearing. Mayor, I believe you have the figures in the, in the draft?
I do.
Resolution, okay.
I do, I do, I do, I mean, I do, yeah.
So, the estimated cost for the improvements is 1.9968 million dollars. And the expenses to be incurred in making such improvement is 1,299,000 dollars, so the total cost of the improvement will be 3,295,800 dollars. will be three million, two hundred ninety-five thousand, eight hundred dollars. Portion of the cost to be paid by the city is declared to be two million, four hundred nine thousand, four hundred forty-nine dollars. And the cost, a portion of the cost to be assessed to benefiting property owners is declared to be eight hundred eighty-six thousand, three hundred fifty-one dollars. So following this resolution, the council can always lower those numbers. You just can't go higher after this stage. And then the uh interest rate declared uh on those assessments is five percent based on um in, in part recommendation from uh staff and uh your, your bonding consultant. So five percent is the proposed interest rate.
I move to approve twenty-twenty-three oh two seven and twenty-twenty-three oh two eight.
Second.
Motion and second on both resolutions, twenty-twenty-three oh twenty-seven, twenty-twenty-three oh twenty-eight. Street improvements. Questions or concerns? Yes, Bob?
Could you uh paraphrase the cost benefit analysis by any chance?
Paraphrase as in?
Make it short.
As in what it is or, or?
As in what, what it is, yeah.
And, and so the city, um, since the statute, the four twenty-nine special assessment statute uh is defined such that the maximum amount the city can levy assessments for is based on uh the increase in market value due to the improvement. And so the city engages a, a special type of appraiser to do, to prepare an opinion on what that anticipated increase in market value is due to the improvements. And so they make a recommendation to the city, which in essence defines the, the cap of your special assessments.
Okay, so what is the cap?
Well, it's different for each class of, of properties. So if you recall, we define, or that report defines a, a cap for residential properties, commercial properties uh and the like. And so we'll have those figures summarized at the special assessment hearing in that. We'll, we'll demonstrate a slide of what those amounts are.
Okay. It's all I wanted to know, just the numbers.
Motion and second, twenty-three oh twenty-seven, twenty-twenty-three oh twenty-eight. Any further questions or concerns? All those in favor signify by aye. Aye. Opposed, motion does carry.
Great.
So, uh, administrator, Chris, can I?
Uh, I just have, well, two things depending on whether or not uh you were going to speak to the um De La Forest consult?
Yeah, you were me.
Okay, I'll leave that in your capable hands. So um, the only thing I have then is, uh, it looks like July twelfth is the date that has been confirmed. So please confirm your calendars. I sent out an invite for that. For the, um, for the first session of the, of the training, um, for the, starting the team building and then going to the um goal setting and visioning. Um, so that will be at St. Ben's. They're going to let us use the president's room. Um, and what I wanted to bring up tonight is, I would say in the very near future, probably within the next, hopefully week or two, at, two at the most, you will be getting a um, an email uh with a link to a survey, um, where you, it's an assessment. So it'd be kind of where we can, so we can get um an assessment of where we are, uh, how we relate to each other, how we interact with each other and what some of our um, some of the things we need to take a look at. So I would invite you to uh get that done as soon as you can. Yes.
The survey going to come from some other email domain or come from you?
The doodle.com, I think?
No, it won't be doodle.
The survey.
The, 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 the survey, um, I, typically how it works, I haven't done this for a couple of years here for this particular group. I usually what happens is they send me the link.
Got it.
And then I send it to you. Um, but it might have their name in it. It's Tabletop Group is what the name is.
Tabletop Group?
Yep.
Okay. And then you've used this survey, this organization in the past?
Uh, three times.
At?
Uh, I did it uh once in Belle Plaine and twice in East Grand Forks.
And what was the benefit of the survey?
It gives you a, it gives you a very, in my opinion, an accurate and realistic look at what some of the areas that need to be focused on in that first session of the training, meaning where, how do we communicate with each other? Do we communicate with each other effectively? What are some of our barriers? And um, how do we relate to each other?
Good.
I got just one simple. Who's going to facilitate this? You or do you have a group?
I, I'll facilitate it.
Okay.
He's done it before, so.
Okay, I've been through some of these with the League of Cities, through some of their training on this.
Yeah, actually, we're, if, if, if I can digress for a second, we're, we're, actually where I first got started in this was, what you probably did, was it with Carl New? Was that the facilitator?
I, I don't remember.
It was, he was a guy out of Colorado. So I, and he was the one I worked with originally. Um, and um, I really saw the value in it, so I started working with him more closely. Um, and it's, um, so really this, this whole process, we, we use, the, the first part here, this is through, this is the five dysfunctions of the team. That's something that he has utilized as well, but it's not something that's through him. It's uh international and it gets used quite a bit and I, I find it to be very effective. But the process, how we're going to, how it's implemented and how we use it to move forward is based off of um what Carl New did. And he was the one that did a lot of training for the League of Minnesota Cities. He's probably the one that, that we were talking about. He unfortunately has retired and uh doesn't do this anymore. However, um, him and I have gotten to be fairly close and I still work with him.
I mean, I'm going from a forty-year, you know, thing, so. Might have been yesterday, but I doubt it.
So then David, what happens here when everyone's gone on July twelfth? Not everyone's going to be gone. The city's still going to function?
Yeah, the department heads will, will all be out over there. We still will have the staff that will be here. Um, and we will have our cell phones on, I mean, in case there's an emergency that we need to attend to, we will be available. We won't actually be that far away. So we, we could respond if we have to. Um, we're going to try to avoid it if at all possible. But uh, the support staff will still be here and they said we will be available if need be.
And then somehow this gets posted, so we don't violate open.
Correct, correct.
Yeah, and actually, somebody could actually show up to listen along.
Yeah, right.
Just letting you know.
I, I.
I hope that doesn't happen.
Well, in the times I've been, I'd have one reporter show up for one of the meetings.
Really?
Stuck around for a couple of hours, got very bored and left.
I'm sure, it's very dry.
Yes. Kind of makes, yeah, it's, it's important to us and it, it maybe is more interesting to us, but to an outsider, it's probably very boring.
July twelfth?
Correct.
Nothing else happening that day?
Not yet.
Well, that wasn't one of the invites, was it? Okay. I mean, you, you have, you think of it like, oh, that wasn't one of the invites from, from Jason, was it?
And there's a fine if you're not there.
Thanks, David. So on my plate is, as you realize, we didn't get bonding for any of the, well, we did get one piece of the bonding, the local, or not bonding. We did get some of the legislative action done, local option sales tax for the city, but we'll have to figure that out. But we didn't get anything else. Um, and so Chris De La Forest reached out to me and we've had a little conversation about, do you want to continue the agreement into the next year, you know, this summer and next year through the next session? And um, it's hard for me to say because I mean, it's still going to be a mixed match of legislators, but, and it's not a, twenty-twenty-four is not a bonding year. It's normally odd years. But I also communicated with Eric Putnam, who says that if they're going to do bonding, then they may have another visit scheduled, like we did. Was it two years ago? They, when we went through the dog and pony show with the, and? Yeah, it's one or two years. So he said he, Eric Putnam would like to, Senator Putnam would like to, if we're interested, go through the same dog and pony show again. Part of the resolutions that we signed today was the um application, um, resolution for supporting applications to four state bonding. The, the ask is, again, do you want to incorporate De La Forest Consulting to do his summer work and meet with legislators throughout the summer in addition to next year um at, at when session is, starts in February? Or not? And we have a similar contract. You know, it's sixteen thousand dollars. I don't think he changed it, did he? Yeah. And
Yes.
But it's, I mean, did, did a couple of times ago, but not this time. And my big thing is still, we, our big, to me, the number one thing is extending the sewer main extension. I mean, and that's, we're going to have to go through M and B and see how much more of an increase. And we can actually say that we started at five million, we're at seven million or whatever it is. But I think if, and again, if we get seven million and we pay him sixteen thousand for a seven million dollar project, well, thirty-two thousand, I guess, for last year and this year. But that's still quite a big savings. I know it's a, so I want to bring it back next time and continue the discussions to, to Chris and then have a fuller, complete council discussion about it. To me, I always think it's.
Is it something that will be addressed in twenty-twenty-four? Or just maybe, maybe not?
Well, I want to get to understand it from Eric Putnam, if it's actually going to be another bond next year. If it's not going to be another bonding year, then, I mean, if Democrats are going to say no, then it doesn't help us to pay a consultant to blow into the wind.
Right, that's what, that's what I'm asking.
That's the biggest question I have for all our legislators, will they bond or won't they? And if they're not going to, then it doesn't make sense to, to pay this. But it would then in another resolution, twenty-twenty-four for twenty-twenty-five. And then we could start the ball rolling like May or June at the end of twenty-twenty-four session for twenty-twenty-five. But that has to be clarified by me and maybe somebody else. So that once we get that question answered, we'll know a little more about whether to move forward. But, but it's on the table and we'll have to fine tune what the specifics are in the contract before we sign it or move it forward. Okay? It's just more informational, disappointed, until we figure out bonding in twenty-twenty-four and what the specifics are if we move forward with this. You guys have any updates at all?
I have a, I have a question.
Sure.
So I thought we applied for some February bonding through Klobuchar and, is it Tina? What's her name?
Dana Smith.
Yeah.
And Emmer.
And did we hear from that yet?
We, I thought, uh, Klobuchar.
Did we follow through on that by sending something to DC? So where, what's the status on that?
I don't know if, if you have a separate, David may have not even seen this because I think they had gone to, to Jeff previously.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, my understanding that they were submitted, there was an acknowledgement of the submittal, but we have not received any other word that uh further consideration had been given to those applications. I know in some other communities, we've been hearing uh that, that they have not advanced. I just don't know that we've heard anything or that I've heard anything with respect to St. Joseph.
Okay. I think, I apologize, I, I'm not aware of the, the situation.
So there are three, we sent our senators and uh congressmen a capital directed spending request. Two were for the sewer main extension, one was for additional money for community.
Water.
Yeah, the community center. Now, and I'm not sure if everybody got the same request. I don't recall that. But I thought Klobuchar had moved hers along, even without acknowledgement, like out of her office into the bucket. No?
I, I'm, I'm a little out of that.
Yeah, I know.
Little out of that loop. And so I haven't heard anything from our funding team that, that, that there was acknowledgement of it, so.
We should get the original, I don't know, request and follow up with their offices on what's going on.
Yeah.
Because I know it was a tight deadline. It was like a three-week or two-week deadline.
Less than that.
Yeah, right. No, we had to, we, we worked a couple of quick days to get it all, the right paperwork in.
We should see where it's at. And I guess I will say, yeah, now that you've explained, I, I, I misspoke. I, I have heard of it. I just, I'm not aware of any response yet, but I can check.
Okay. Yeah, I, you're right. We haven't followed up like we should have. I just, I know it's for the twenty-twenty-four appropriations budget, but it has to go through the twenty-twenty-three, whatever process it is to get the twenty-twenty-four appropriations. So, yeah, if you could, follow up and see if anything's, if anything's going on. Any other questions, gentlemen? Staff, anything? Right, item eleven.
Move two, adjourn.
Motion and second to adjourn. All those in favor signify by aye. Aye. We are, motion approves. We are adjourned.